Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order the July 21st, 2011 meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. And before we actually get started here, this is one of the hottest days of the year, not merely because my car said it was 105, but we have also a new trustee with us here, trustee Greg Muzel. So, uh...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome.
It's an honor to join you.
We look forward to having you with us.
Thank you.
And one other thing before we get started, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda. We need to move the lobbyist report immediately after roll call and recognition of visitors, and that will immediately be followed by an executive session of about 30 minutes. And so I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and with that, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terry Schlicht, if we could have a roll call and recognition of visitors, please.
This evening's visitors include Dustin Avery, Jim Freed, and Randy Iry.
Thank you. All right, and...
Jeffrey, excuse me.
Okay. All right. And we will now move to the lobbyist report. So, Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. For once, I don't need someone like Bruce Hartman to come before me and give you good news. I actually have a little bit of good news. July has been a good month for higher education and for the college. And we can start by taking a look at some of the budget numbers. The year-end budget numbers ticked up about 18 million or so towards the end of the year. That pushes the ending balance in the state's checkbook close to $100 million for 2011. It's anticipated that that number will go up a little bit in 2012 based on the really smart people that make revenue projections. I think that will generally hold true as we've seen some turnaround in various marketplaces. The interesting thing about that is, is while that's good news now, having an ending balance after some of the significant cuts that we had this past legislative session will produce interesting legislation and interesting discourse next year for the 2012 session. There is a, the administration desires, and there are a number of legislators that desire to have a vigorous tax policy debate. We will have that tax policy debate, and there will be a number of different bills before the legislature next year. The desire for some of those folks is to remove or eliminate corporate and personal income tax. Now, the type of ending balances that we have will not satisfy the removal of corporate and personal income tax. And so, it will be a very hard-fought battle during the session next year, and will be one of the key factors that take our time next year. It's also an election year, and so, as you might imagine, when you're talking about taxes and cutting or raising, and we won't be raising any, but when you have votes on cutting taxes, each one of those votes will be counted and used on postcards as folks sign up to run for office in the coming year. Moving on to another activity that will take a lot of time this summer and fall is the reapportionment, redistricting process. There are 14 communities that legislators will travel around to. There will be town halls at these 14 communities, and I've listed them in my report, so I won't go into them into detail. But it will be the task of the committee to redraw the congressional boundaries to accommodate 713,000 or so folks in each one of those four congressional districts. That's not going to be an easy task. I've actually been down to Legislative Research Department and have attempted to draw some maps, and we drew one in about two hours, and we were told by the research staff that that is the fastest that anyone has drawn a map. And we went in with a plan, but that was not taking breaks and just moving right along. And so, you can imagine that we will see multiple maps from multiple different groups trying to redraw those congressional boundaries. We will be a host site for one of those meetings later on in September. The college will be. And so, it's good that we can play a host role in that process. But again, the meetings on this side of the state will probably be very well-attended, would be my guess, given some of the things at stake. The third district right here needs to cough up about 55,000, 57,000 people, and the first district needs to gain a similar amount. So, there are some interesting maps being drawn, and I'll just leave it at that and move on to the next thing. I guess before I do move on to the next thing, Senator Owens, Tim Owens, is chairing the Senate caucus for the redistricting process. And we do have a number of area legislators that are serving in an official capacity on the committee. Senator Vrattle, Representative Anthony Brown, Lance Kinzer, Scott Schwab, and just a little bit south of here, Karen Tyson. So, we have folks that are engaged in the process, and that will carry us through at the end of the year. And again, you'll see votes on other pieces of legislation next year based on how these maps are going to look at, how they're going to look. Other bits of good news, it's no secret that we had some solid appointments from the governor's office for the Kansas Board of Regents. Former community college trustee Fred Logan was appointed, as well as former state representative Kenny Wilk, and then a person that you may have heard of from Hayes, Kansas, Robert Moran. So, we will have good representation as the governor makes his first set of appointments on the board that governs higher ed. And I think that's a positive move that sort of paints a picture for things to come for higher ed, and I think it's a good picture. That's what we're hearing, and I truly believe that, having worked with each one of those individuals. With regard to interim committees, once again, this summer is no different than the past couple of summers. We are having fewer interims appointed. Part of that is, has been due to budget. There's not money to pay legislators for the committees that they serve on. This year is no different, but I think the other issue is redistricting will take up a large portion of the time that might normally be spent on study topics during the interim. There are a couple that we'll be paying particular attention to. One is a Can Ed Study Committee that will take a look at the broadband educational network across the state. We'll also be watching the classified state employee market pay adjustments. Again, we don't have classified state employees here, but that process sort of dictates what pay looks like in other areas of governing bodies. So, we'll take a look at, see what goes on there. Tomorrow, the CAPERS Study Committee will be meeting. That committee actually will be meeting about nine times over the course of the summer and fall months. That's one of the committees that will meet the most, and will also have quite a bit of activity that will flow into next year's legislative session. Finally, before I stop, Dr. Callaway and I recently traveled to Washington, D.C. to visit the congressional delegation. We had a great visit with Congressman Yoder. He mentioned that not only did he want to get to campus, but wanted us to get that on his calendar and soon, wants to visit some areas on campus that we have been working on at the federal level. And we did give our two senators and the congressman an update on the projects that we have ongoing, that we have some federal support for. We also asked for support for a couple of grants that are currently in the process, and updated them on a grant that will soon be put into the mix that we'll likely be asking for their support on. So, it was another good visit where we've continued to build upon the relationships that we have, and I think that those ultimately will pay off down the road. So, I'll stop there and see if there's any questions. I know you have a lot on your plate this evening.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Carter, thank you very much. All right, as we mentioned in our revised agenda, I would like to now entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel manners of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, consultation with an attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship in order to protect the privilege and the board's communications with its attorney on legal matters. This session will last 30 minutes, and no action will be taken during this session. We'd like to invite, in addition to the board, Dr. Terry Callaway, Dr. Dana Grove, Dr. Judy Korb, Becky Scentleaver, Mark Ferguson, Terry Schlicht, and Detective Don Emerson. And so, at this time, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Rail. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a second by trustee Cook. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. We will now move into executive session that will begin at 5:15, and we will be finished All right, we have returned from our executive session. No action was taken during that executive session. However, in light of trying to make sure that we do things with an abundance of caution, I believe that we have a couple of motions that will be made. And trustee Rail, do you have a couple of motions you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Chair Weiss, and I'll just consolidate this into a single motion, if that's acceptable. I'd like to make a motion that we remove the recommendation pertaining to Mr. James Freed from the consent agenda, that we accept his request for a hearing, that the board refer the matter to a hearing officer for a closed hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I believe that that returns us to our agenda for this evening, and moves us directly into petitions and communications. The petitions and communications section of the board agenda is the time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak, in which case the board may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak out of either the first or second petitions and communications section, but not both. Prior to beginning comments, we ask you to state your name, your address, city, and state. And at this time, do we have anyone that would like to address the board? All right, seeing none, we'll close the first petitions and communications section of the agenda and move on to awards and recognitions. And Dr. Grove, do we have any this evening?
No, we do not have any awards or recognitions this evening.
All right, thank you. We'll move on then to, we've already had the college lobbyist report. We'll move to committee reports and recommendations, the first of which is the nominating committee. Each year, at the beginning of the July session for the board, we have new officers that are elected. I will read the slate for this year, and then ask if there's any other nominations from the board that they would like to make, and then we'll vote on that. So, for officers, for chairman, Don Weiss, for vice chair, Melody Rail, treasurer, Bob Drummond, secretary Jerry Cook. For committees, for management committee, Bob Drummond, chair, and John Stewart. For human resources, Jerry Cook and Melody Rail. For learning quality, Stephanie Sharp and Greg Muzel. For audit committee, Don Weiss and Melody Rail. For board liaisons, for the foundation, Greg Muzel and Stephanie Sharp. For the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Jerry Cook. For collegial steering, Bob Drummond and Don Weiss, and the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle trustee, John Stewart. So, it is the recommendation of the nominating committee that the board of trustees approve the 2011, 2012 slate of officers, committee, and liaison assignments, and...
I would so move.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion or any other further nominations? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Congratulations to the new officers. Next is the management report, and trustee Dr. Drummond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you turn your packet behind tab three, beginning with page nine, you'll begin to see the recommendations. There are several recommendations tonight, 17 to be exact. That's about double what we normally have, so we'll try to get through them very, very quickly. In doing so, we've tried to put together some of those recommendations into a package. Of course, you can separate them as you wish, but we're trying to expedite the meeting as best we can. The first one pertains to a recommendation regarding the Corvair Road widening project. That's on page nine of your packet. It's necessary for the City of Overland Park to acquire some of our property, some of the property rights owned by JCCC. The easements include our property at the corner of College Boulevard extending south to the end of the college property bordering Corvair Road. We had some significant discussion about this, and we expressed some concerns regarding the timing of this addition of these lanes. Of course, anytime is not a good time, but there are some times that are worse than others, and I think we decided to work with the City of Overland Park to try to make the timing of this project as best as we can in terms of our student and our graduation and things like that. So, anything else, Dr. Callaway, you might want to add to that regarding conversation with the City of Overland Park?
Thank you, Dr. Drummond. Just one other comment I'd make, the management committee of the board did ask me to follow up with a meeting with the mayor and city manager, and we do have that meeting scheduled for myself, Dr. Sobchak, and Dr. Grove. So, we'll be going down to visit and chat through timing with them, as well as also their proposal for the amount that they are willing to pay for on the easements. We think that there's some opportunity for us to have a discussion around that. Also, timing's really important for us. One of the things that we learned at the presentation was that, in fact, we would have two major periods of time where our entrance on Corvair would be closed, and one happened to be near the end of the spring term, and then sometime in the summer leading very, very close to our fall term, and so, we're very concerned about those timing issues, both for entry and exit into the campus. If you might remember, earlier this year, we had our far west gate entrance closed for a month or so, and the parking issues on, or the, actually getting around on campus was really difficult, and exiting between four and six was very, very difficult and time-consuming. So, we're going to try and work on those timing issues to make sure we make it as best as possible for our students, and hopefully, we'll be able to find some solutions. The good news we heard was when they do close the main entrance on Corvair, the entrance near the Nerman Museum will remain open. So, that would help with entry into the campus, but it will be much more difficult with that exit, because that is our largest exit. It'd also create a huge, huge traffic jam at the eastern entrance on College with that entrance closed and folks having to come all the way around the corner. So, we're going to try and work on that as best we can. We're also looking at other possible solutions to remedy the traffic congestion we know we'll have on campus, and we'll be better prepared next month to talk about those things.
Thank you, Dr. Callaway. Any questions about that?
Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Drummond and I discussed it a little bit, but I'm assuming that these easements will not affect the long-term use of that property we have. In fact, later, we have a naming right tonight, but for that piece of property, that won't affect how we use that long-term.
Correct. That will not affect that.
And trustee Drummond, I do have two questions. Do you know how deep this easement will be or converted to street in terms of, is this 10 feet, 20 feet?
We had a map, and I don't recall the top of my head, Mr. Chair, but I'm sure...
I'll try to answer that. The depth is not very much. One of them is for just a traffic signal, and it's just a small square footage. And most of the even is long sidewalk areas, so that goes from the sidewalk probably no further back 10 feet from there going west. So, it's not going to have a proper intersection impact on it.
All right, and it'd be your opinion that this would also not impact either the usability or the aesthetics of the monument sign?
That sign will not be impacted at all.
As much as we're hoping it might.[1199.08][1199.08](LAUGHING). Right now, it doesn't look like it will.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have any other questions?
It would be the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the easements associated with Corvair widening project for the City of Overland Park, subject to approval by college council, and I would so move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Please continue.
Thank you very much. The second item pertains to the sale, issuance, and delivery of Series 2011 Student Commons and Parking System Revenue Bonds, and we have two guests here tonight. I would like them to come forward, if they would please, and introduce themselves and explain the good news that we have from them. So, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dustin Avery with Piper Jeffrey. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. I wanted to share with you some of the results from the bond sale that we sold today. It was actually a refinancing of a portion of the bonds from the 2002 bond issue. Couple highlights I wanted to point out. The bond rating for the community college is reaffirmed at AA+. So, certainly wanted to extend our congratulations on having that bond rating reaffirmed. It's a very strong rating for the community college. We refinanced the 2020 through '27 maturities of the 2002 issue. The true interest cost, we received three bids on the issue this morning at 10:00 a.m. The true interest cost was 3.7%. We received three bids from three underwriting firms. We awarded the bid to Raymond James and Company. The prior bond interest rate, so the interest rate on the bonds that we refinanced was 5.1%. Total savings, which is net of all bond costs over the life of the bond issue, $978,111.81. That on a present value basis is a little over $750,000 on a present value basis, which equals about 8% PV savings. From an industry's perspective, we always try to exceed at least 3% PV savings when we're looking at considering refinancing, which I also believe is community college guidelines as well. So, certainly, we're very pleased with the results. Timing obviously was very, very good. We've been in a very favorable interest rate environment here recently. I think the timing looked out very, very well.
Thank you, Randy.
Yes, I'm Randy Iry with Gilmore &amp; Bell, and we are serving as bond counsel on this transaction. And we have taken the results of the bid and inserted them in the documents, and I think the next action item would be for you to take the action that's outlined in your board packet to approve the sale of the bonds to Raymond James, and then to adopt the resolution actually authorizing the issuance of the bonds. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone has on.
Questions?
Okay. Mr. Chairman, is it three respondents? Is that typical? Is that high or low in this market?
It kind of depends. You know, we were, we experienced some low, there's been some low volume in the bond market here most of this year. We've seen some bids early this year that we received 10 bids on any such, any given transaction. I would say that three is not uncommon. It's better than one, obviously. But any time that we, I'd say, anything, most time is somewhere between three and 10 bids is what we receive on any type of bond transaction. I think the Raymond James one, when compared to the rest of the market, is actually very, very favorable. When we look back at what some of our preliminary numbers were back in, right after Fourth of July weekend, I think our savings was right around four and a half present value savings, which was a gross savings of a little over $500,000. So, since that time, I think it, obviously, we've seen some improvement. Obviously, the bond rating was reaffirmed at AA+, which significantly helps your market access, and I think Raymond James came in with a tremendous bid.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right. Any other discussion?
I would just say that Joe and his team, Don and Bob, have done an excellent job. They've been following this for months now, and at first, as was said, we thought our delivery of savings would be a lot less than we have, and I think that pertains to a lot of work they did, and just hitting the market on a good day as well, so, combination, I think.
If I may, Bob Prater has really done a masterful job writing this thing, and I'd like to ask, how critical was that AA+ bond rating in attracting those bidders this morning?
I think it's very critical. I think that you're seeing awfully, because of the sense of the financial crisis really back in '08, you're seeing really a premium on highly rated credits in the marketplace, and investors who are buying your credits are paying a premium for stronger credits, which is obviously indicative of what the bid we received here today.
With all that being said, Mr. Chair, it's the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the wording and sale of approximately $10 million of Student Commons and Parking System Refunding Revenue Bonds to Raymond James Associates Incorporated, the successful bidder, and to adopt a resolution as contained in supplement B of the board packet authorizing the issuance and delivery of approximately $10 million of Student Commons and Parking System Refunding Revenue Bonds, and I would make that a motion.
Second. We have both a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Congratulations on a job well done. $750,000 is a considerable amount of savings, so thank you very much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Well done. We appreciate it. The next two items pertain to the organization resolution agreement with UMB Bank and the corporate certification of authority. We do this every year. It's sort of housekeeping things, but it's something we must do. With those two items, it would be the recommendation of the management committee, the board of trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the UMB Bank Organization Resolution and Agreement for fiscal year 2012, as shown on pages 20 to 22 of the board packet, as well as the designation of US Bank as official depository bank, as shown on pages 24 to 25 of the board packet, and I would so move this, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
We have both a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Couple more items that shouldn't take much time. Official newspaper, that's on page 26, and lease agreement to renewal, page 27. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to designate some publications as official newspaper of the college, and the publication constitute legal notice on behalf of the board of trustees to exercise the two-year lease extension for West Park Center leases per agreement, subject to review by college council, and I would so move.
Second.
We have both a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Next recommendation pertains to the legal budget approval and publication. As you know, we need to do this every year, so it's the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to authorize a publication of notice, a public hearing of the 2011-12 budget and budget summary, subject to adjustment as actual expenditure figures are available. And I would make that a motion.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Please.
Just a bit of information, we did receive some good news from the county this week, Don, that the, we had originally been projecting, as you might remember, our initial thought was our budget reduction from the county might be somewhere in the ballpark of 4% to 4.5%, and then some numbers were adjusted to bring us down into the 1.25% range. And just this week, we heard that that number's actually less than that. And Bob, if I'm right, it was .05 of a percent. So, the numbers look very good, basically flat. So, we're going to continue to build the budget around the minus 1.25, trying to be, continuing to be conservative, because still are opportunities for some appeals, but the numbers are looking very good for us, and literally just got that information in the last day or so.
When is the, I don't remember right now. When is the final date for the appeal process to be completed?
Well, I don't know that off the top of my head. Don, do you know the final date for real estate appeals?
I don't, but we will receive a document from the county in October with an amended rate.
It'll be somewhere in that ballpark, I believe, right? We'll actually have the board approve of the budget, but there's still some very gentle tweaking that happens as a result of those, so... But the news continues to get better, and as Dick Carter mentioned, also good news from the state, so things are looking positive.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the next recommendation, which is maybe perhaps more exciting than the previous ones. An opportunity to... more exciting than the previous ones. An opportunity to really move forward with our Culinary and Hospitality Academy. Purpose of this motion is to finalize the trustees' commitment to this project by approving the reallocation of funds from Capital Outlight Fund to the building project. We just might suggest to you, so you have understanding if this comes up again, is, as you know, we have several million dollars in pledges. Those pledges will come in across the period of time. There's always a rare, rare chance that some of those pledges may not be completed in a full amount. You also should know that we're continuing to fundraise to make this even a larger amount of money to give toward this project. And my point is that we will be repaying the building fund back, the capital outback, as the pledges come in. So, the $7 million that we are suggesting, based on discussions of previous years, will be more than that, and then it'll go back to that amount as the pledges come in. Just so you're aware of that, if you study the financials very closely, you will see that ebb and flow of funds as they're paid and moving in and out of that budget. With that being said, it's a recommendation of the management committee, the board of trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration that the board of trustees dedicate $7 million of the Capital Outlight Fund for construction of the Hospitality and Culinary Arts Facility. And I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. And I want to personally congratulate the foundation on extremely terrific job doing that, especially in difficult economic times. And I'm very much looking forward to seeing this building that will affect not only Johnson County, but all of Kansas City. And we will all be eating much better because of, maybe not any healthier, but it'll be very, very tasty. So...
Mr. Chairman, question. Is that $7 million then in the $11 million proposed budget on the capital outlay, or will that be adjusted?
It's included in that.
Is cash that we have on hand?
Thanks.
Good question.
Trustee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if someone in the room can maybe give us a timeline. I've been asked a couple of times, including at the foundation meeting last week, about, you know, when is it going to break ground, and when is all of this going to happen? I know we've hired a consultant, DLR Group, DLR?
Architects.
DLR Group. But people have asked me about, what are the next steps, and when are we going to see a building?
Okay, Dr. Callaway, perhaps you can address that?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, we have hired DLR and Associates, and Olson is Associates for the engineering and architectural work. And that work is moving ahead as we speak. We also have an RFP out for construction bids. And I believe those are due back somewhere in a month or so. Is that correct, Rex and Mitch? We're moving along, but I know the time's running. I think it was about a four-week spread on that. And once we identify a general contractor, then we'll be able to start to think about groundbreaking and those kinds of things. Our hope was to, even if it's preliminary, just kind of turn some dirt to do something still this year. But the reality of life is, we wouldn't start any real moving of dirt or other things until the spring term. Our plan would be to be, to have the building work happening next, you know, through the spring and next year with an opening in the fall of '13.
Very good.
Thank you.
And as, just a reminder, I believe the Olathe Health Education Center is only a couple of months away from its opening. Are we?
Actually, we should be receiving the keys on the Olathe Health Education Center in the next week or two.
Yeah, next week.
And...
We're looking for some task completion. We'll receive that letter from Jay Brown, so we're ready to move in. We have our temporary occupancy permit right now. Next week, we expect to have the permanent.
I need that one.
So, in terms of the interior, it's pretty much completed. We're just a few punch list items left. All the classroom furniture is installed about in next week. All the office furniture will be installed. And we actually, classes, there are going to be some practical nursing classes, a couple of them will start on August the 3rd.
Oh, okay.
But right now, the audiovisual, all that work will be completed next week. Phones are being installed as we speak. So, as far as interior is really going, yeah. So, on exterior, just, you know, a few punch list items, or some landscape items that need to be taken care of, and that will be completed during the fall. And on the west and south side, there's some cast stone that we're reworking. But overall, the project is working well. Like Dr. Callaway said, we're going to take over possession, and we'll certainly be ready for the classes on August 20.
If any of the trustees would like a follow-up tour, or trustee me, so I know you've not had a chance to walk through there, but we can certainly be more than pleased to get you all in there as your schedules would allow. Just let us know. Give myself or Terry an email or phone call. But we'd certainly be pleased to get you through there as time would allow.
Very good. Thank you.
I'd be remiss if we didn't recognize Rex for his leadership and great job in managing the project for us and keeping us on track and on time and within budget. So, great job to Rex. Thank you.
Thank you. And trustee Drone, I apologize for diverging from your motion here for a few minutes. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to the next two motions pertaining to technology, Voice Over Internet Protocol System. This is fully budgeted for and a system that we've been moving toward for quite some time and another step in that direction. So, it's a recommendation of the management committee, the board of trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from CDW Government LLC in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for the second phase of the Voice Over Internet P system. And I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have some cameras, document cameras, that we want to purchase. It's a recommendation of the management committee, the board of trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $100,862 from Kansas City Audiovisual for the purchase of Wolf Vision document cameras. And I would so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And I just have one question. What exactly is a document camera?
This is cameras in classrooms, if you can put any kind of document on the book.
Okay.
Something like the old project that we were replacing 25 very old systems that we have replaced. And now, we do comparison and say some other like, we're replacing all of them.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion?
A little different than what we used to teach on, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next project pertains to restroom renovation at Carlson Center. As you know, that's a heavily, heavily used building. And we want to keep it up to the standards that we have. So, it's a recommendation, the management committee, the board of trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $129,900 from KES Construction LLC to purchase, plus an additional $12,990 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for the total expenditure not to exceed $142,890 for the Carlson Center restroom renovation. And I would so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Please continue.
Thank you. The next three recommendations pertain to work done with BNSF. And these are all paid by them through funds that rotate between them to us. And their welding shed enclosure, crane yard site work, crane yard fencing. And so, it would be the recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to, number one, approve the low bid of $159,703 from KES Construction LLC, plus an additional $15,970 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed $175,673 for the JCCBNSF welding shelter enclosure. Number two, to approve the low bid of $141,918 from Mill Valley Excavating LLC, plus an additional $14,191 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed $156,109 for the JCCBNSF crane yard site work. Number three, to approve the low bid of $54,050, plus an additional $5,405 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs for a total expenditure not to exceed $59,455 from the Mayor Fence Corporation for the JCCBNSF crane yard fencing. And I would so move those points. Whew. Take a breath. All right, any discussion?
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just a point of information for the board members. I think most of you know that in our contract with BNSF, each year, we collect some funds that are specifically designated for capital projects and facility improvements. And you'll know the funding source for this is that funding mechanism. We serve any, depending on what the year is, anywhere from 7,000 to 12,000 students in that BNSF program. Those aren't included in our 22,000 credit student headcount. It's a very large program for us, a very important one for our community. As you know, you know, those students who come here for six to eight weeks are here spending money in the hotels and restaurants and other things. They're great community partners. They also do great work here for our college, and they've been very supportive of the foundation. Did want to point out that the funding sources in college funds are public funds. It is coming from that BNSF projects fund, so...
And I believe we're also needing a second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion's pass.
Thank you. On page 26, Athletic Team Bus Charter Service to haul our athletes around for the next academic year. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal of $85,220 from Aerial Stage Lines, plus an additional $8,522 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen events for a total expenditure of $93,742 for Athletic Team Charter Bus Service. And I would so move the approval of this recommendation.
Second.
All right, we have both a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. The next one, which also happens to be the last one, is renewal of annual contract for fine paper. It's a recommendation of the management committee, the board of trustees, accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the renewal of annual contracts for fine paper at $100,000 for Shaughnessy Paper, and $50,000 with Expedite Paper, for a total expenditure not to exceed $150,000. And I would so move that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have both a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Would just like to point out two more parts of our report. Of course, the capital acquisitions and improvements. We spend quite a bit of time every month reviewing those. And Dr. Grove and Rex do, and the teams just do a great job on all of those things. And we're moving along well, according to schedule on all of our projects. We're on budget. And the second piece, I'd call your attention to on page 42 through 45, is our IT infrastructure plan. It's moving forward very, very rapidly, very competently. And of course, Denise Moore has provided excellent, excellent leadership in that area. And I think part of this, just to call your attention, there's two areas that we talked about tonight, the campus-wide wireless and the voice over IP. Those are two projects that are moving along with great, great speed. And we appreciate the good work that all of our folks do. And that would conclude my report.
All right, thank you. Trustee Sharp, do we have a learning quality report this evening?
No, we didn't meet this month.
All right, thank you. All right, trustee Dr. Cook, Human Resources, please.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. We did meet on June 28th and discussed three major items. One was the RFP for housekeeping. We received an update regarding where we are in that process. Discussed a number of items. I think the main items was the quality of the companies that had submitted proposals was discussed. We also discussed some options that we might consider if we do go to this service and when, if we go to this service. Those options are lined out to you, doing it at the Olathe Health Center Education only, night only, by building outsourced, all outkeeping and outsourced at JCC salary and our benefit level. And I think the staff is continuing to pursue those particular areas, as well as we'll be conducting meetings with our current staff with that whole process. The management committee, I believe, has discussed it or will discuss it. I think each of the committees of the board will discuss it, as we followed up from our board meeting last month. There are very serious issues to consider. I think staff is taking those into account. And we'll continue with that process of making an evaluation of where we are with that process. Unless Dr. Corb or Dr. Callaway have additional comments, or Melody, you're on the Human Resource Committee, we'll go to the other items unless you have something you want to say.
The only thing I might share, and Mr. Chairman, if you'd like, I had planned to do a little bit of an update in our old business on, you know, where we go next.
If you want to do that now, that's fine.
I could be very brief and do it now. And then, we, as we were asked to do last month, we've been doing presentations at each of the board committee meetings. We're planning to do a town hall meeting with our housekeeping staff. Part of the agenda for that meeting will be a conversation related to what might an internal RFP response look like. So, you know, if in fact, there's some efforts and things that we could do to take a look at how we do what we're doing and save some money for the college and maybe get ourselves to a place where staffing levels are consistent with the, with some of the external proposals are, with what kind of savings or benefits it might bring, you know, for us to also consider. As we know, the RFP responses that we've received, the best savings that we've seen so far in our RFP process was $2.7 million. The lowest bid saved us that kind of money. The most expensive bid for us saved us $2 million. But what we want to do is, making sure we do all of our due diligence, is meet with those staff members and have some good conversation around, okay, what is it that we want to do internally to put something on the table that would allow us to look at some savings in ways that we could not only do better job of scheduling and, you know, maybe expanding some of the service area and the like to, you know, help us get something that would provide some savings to maintain the work internally. So, we think that it'd be appropriate to do that kind of a work with our staff as well. And so, we'll be meeting, I think, August 2nd. We've arranged for a town hall meeting that, with them, where we'll have some of that conversation, so we can kind of help, use our staff to help kind of inform us and work with us towards what that might look like and ways we might work collaboratively to find a good solution that might, you know, cause us to, you know, save some of the dollars we want to do, but by doing it within the existing staff. So, we want to put that together. And then, our plan would be by next month, have some kind of a recommendation or proposal for you. We know they have a really good, talented people, but, you know, we certainly have some cost issues here, too. There's a big difference between, you know, where we are today and the 2.7 million we would save. So, we think that there's some, we've got some good, bright people who can help us think through that. You've heard some of those speak at the podium, too. So, we're going to give the group the opportunity to work with us and find some solutions and see what we can bring forward to you, what our internal proposal, if you will, might look like, and then also explore what the external numbers look like. But, you know, as we've all heard, 2.7 million is a lot of savings. But quite frankly, you know, we've all had the discussion publicly and privately about, you know, do we want to do it on the back of one employee group? So, you've heard those discussions in our committee meetings, and we'll continue to do that due diligence and hopefully have a recommendation for next month.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on this?
The only other thing I might share is, there was a comment last month with a recommendation, or at least a suggestion, that the reason that Blue Valley Schools did not, you know, had moved away from an outsourcing situation was that there had been some theft by the outsourcing company. I did follow up at the board's recommendation with Al Hannan, and I also had a conversation with Tom Trigg. And though, that information was not accurate. In fact, what they shared with us is that there hadn't been any instances of theft by the outsourcing company or their employees. But in fact, they did have a situation where they had terminated some employees years ago who were internal employees of the district who were running a small business inside, you know, during district time and also using district equipment. So, the information we heard at the podium last month wasn't accurate, but I wanted to make sure that we brought that back to your, to you as well. But, you know, I think that we have a lot of opportunities. We've got a lot of smart people who can try and help us find a good solution internally, too. And we'll bring that information back to you at the next meeting.
All right. Would you be expecting the board to take action on that next month? Or would this take the form of perhaps a first reading for our consideration, again, knowing the board's desire to take a slow and deliberate approach to this?
Our expectation would be that we would bring forward a recommendation to make a decision on. The reality of life is, if we stay inside, it'd just be a matter of us working together, find the solutions to get us to the savings that we can find internally with the, with the mechanism we have in place today. We think that there are some savings. We think that there are some savings we can find. We've found some already, quite frankly, by non-filling vacant positions. The, but there, you know, there's probably some other savings there we can find, you know, by scheduling or other kinds of things. If the decision would be to go with an outsourced opportunity, then there would be some phasing in of that because it would take, you know, at least a month or so to, you know, work with the company and identify what the process will be, and then for them to be doing interviews and those kinds of things. So, I think they gave us, Rex, about a two-month timeframe from the time that if we would decide to go out, about a two-month timeframe from that period before. Right. So, for staff, I mean, we would, if in fact we decide to stay in, it's just a matter of us dealing then with the internal changes that, that we would have to deal with. If, if we would go to an outsourced operation, there'd probably be some type of a, about a two-month window that we would be working with staff as we would kind of phase through that. So, I know there's been some question about, you know, will you, will we find out on Friday that we don't have a job? And the answer would be no, there would be at least a two-month time window, probably. Six weeks to probably two-month time window for us as we go there. But at this stage, we want to make sure that we do all the due diligence with the group inside, too. So, that'd be the plan for the agenda of the meeting in the town hall.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to briefly mention, you know, we're looking at a current expenditure somewhere in the neighborhood of 4.7 million dollars a year for our custodial services, and then we're looking at a potential savings of between two and 2.6 million dollars, and that's a lot of money. And, but we've heard what we've been told at the podium for the past few meetings, and I, you know, I think that we're, the college is giving an opportunity to its internal folks to step up to the plate, and we're really, we're really challenging them to come forward with some creative solutions, and, you know, hopefully everyone will make the most of that opportunity and really come forward and step up to the plate and put some things on the table that could potentially make enough of a difference for us to, to consider whether we are willing to, to sacrifice our internal staff to save that $2.6 million. So, you know, the challenge is out there, and, and I hope that, that we'll get a good response and something that we can, can really put on the table and consider.
Very good. Other comments?
The second item we discussed in committee was the nondiscrimination statement. We've had discussion on that for some time. It stems from the request to deal with a more specific, our gender identity, genetic information, gender expression issue. And the committee, like I say, has been discussing that and have brought to you what we think is a first read. I will not read in detail what that nondiscrimination, what those nondiscrimination changes are, but they really, I would highlight that second paragraph where we discuss gender identity, genetic information. Dr. Corb and staff have really researched a number of universities, institutions that have similar kinds of expressions about this issue, and we feel that we're ready to present it to you for a first read. Our plan would be that we would come back in August for a second read for, for adoption. The committee will review again at our August meeting, any changes that have been made since, but we bring it to you for a first read. The second policy that we've been spending some time on is a criminal background check policy and procedure, Policy 415.03, and we also submit that to you for a first read. The discussion that we continue to discuss and try to refine is criminal offense. I will defer to Melody about that topic and Dr. Corb, but I think we're continuing to refine what that means and how it applies. But we would encourage you to study both of those, presenting them tonight for a first read. Dr. Corb, Melody, any comment about the criminal offense piece?
That was just, well, it was just an area that we felt like we needed to think about a little bit more. We need to define it. We need to revise that a little bit. Both Mark Ferguson and Melody, when we went through that, said that's probably something we need to take a little bit closer look at. So, we have not had an opportunity to come up with a reworded language, but this, this policy will go back to the Human Resources Committee after we've had a chance to look at it again, further define that, and then it would come back to you for actual recommendation.
We do have a meeting August 3rd, I believe it is, and, or that Monday, and we will, we'll review that and bring back the, the changes. We did go into executive session to discuss some personnel issues, and that was our meeting on June 28th.
Trustee Musel.
May I go back to the, the criminal background check?
Yes.
Am I understanding that there is no policy now for any type of criminal background checks of any kind, and that this is intended to apply to then all respective employees? Would it be applied to existing employees upon any type of rehire date, or?
Yes, we, we currently are doing that criminal background checks in, on certain employees, so childcare, financial, you know, the ones that, that have been required. This policy would say that we are going to do criminal background checks on all employees, and it does apply to individuals who are moving from one position to another within the college. But it would not mean that we would go and do background checks on all existing employees in their current positions. But if they transition to a different position, then.
And then I assume there's a policy somewhere, and maybe it's in here, that, that says if we turn up something, the next step is X or Y or Z?
Yes, we have a procedure, we have procedures that, that go behind all of our policies, and so that's laid out in the procedures. We have adjudication guidelines and the, the whole thing that says what happens at each step in that process.
And this may be something for the committee, but is there a concern that people will not seek to change positions if there's something in their background from 25 years ago in college, because it would then be disclosed and they're going to have to go through this other process? I don't know what other community colleges are doing, but a background check on everybody could have some deterrent effect, maybe for some folks.
It could, but the, the way the adjudication guidelines are right now, if it's been longer than seven years and it was something that happened back in college, it probably would not show up as a, as a fail on a background check. But, you know, I mean.
Seven years out of college.
All right, and then the question is, does this apply to college attorneys? I see somebody sweating over there. Judy, the, the, the policy of doing the background checks on employees that are transitioning to a new role, is that intended as a catch-up measure, or will that be the, the case for the policy from, once this is adopted from, from then forward? That if, if I come to be employed at the college and then two or three years later I get a promotion to something else, a second background check will be done?
We hadn't talked about that. If we'd already done one on you, if we would do a second one, because the policy also does having there, that's where this criminal offense thing comes in, that if, if there's something that occurs while you are employed, you would be required to report that to us. So, if we had done one when you very first came, you should have reported something to us if something had happened in that three years prior to another promotion. But I'm not sure that the procedures right now address if, if we're going to continue to do them on you every time you get promoted, or if one is it and then we expect you to self-report. So, we may need to address that in the procedures. But it, right now, we are doing them if individuals move from a position into a position that would require it. So, if I move into a position where I'm handling financial kinds of things, we're already doing that. But this would cover really a promotion into any, any other job.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do we have any other further discussion? Trustee Rail?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'd just like to throw in there, I think, is it fair to say that the implementation procedure that sits behind this policy is somewhat of a work in progress? There's, there's the opportunity to make revisions and tweaks to that procedure as questions like this arise that we may have to address that we hadn't really considered. Having never had a policy like this before, there, there are a lot of uncertainties about things that we hadn't really considered, and so, you know, clearly that, that, that operating procedure that sits behind the policy is something that would be subject to, to review and revision if necessary, so.
Absolutely.
And we will be by no means the first community college to implement such a policy. All right.
Mr. Chair, one final comment. We, we take seriously the very first line in the policy. It is the college's intent to provide a safe educational and working environments for its students and employees. And as these individual issues come up, that's, I think, the foundation from which I operate. If we're going to provide a safe environment for employees and students, then let's provide a safe environment for students and employees. And some of these, the criminal background check and others, the self-reporting might be difficult for some, but I, I believe if we're going to be consistent with our intent, then let's be consistent with our intent. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, sir. Trustee Rail?
I think trustee Sharp had a comment to make.
One real quick question. Yeah, actually, it, it is a comment from my time on Human Resources Committee. As we start to look at another HAY study, I would just encourage the committee to look at total compensation and not salary, especially with the cost of healthcare. We don't know where it's going with federal health reform. Benefits are such an important part of the total compensation package, and that wasn't included in the last HAY study. It was just salary. So, I think that if we're going to look at apples to apples salary, everything needs to be included. I would just encourage you to look at that.
All right, thank you, trustee Kurt. All right, I believe we're ready to move on to the president's recommendation for action. We'll begin with the treasurer's report, and trustee Dr. Drummond.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would direct you to tab five, and pages 55 through 65, you see the treasurer's report. This covers, covers the fiscal year through the end of May. I'll just point out a couple of things very quickly and try to field any questions you might have. The college made about $500,000 in debt payments this past month. We received over $28 million from the county in taxes. That'll show up on next month's report. You notice on page 58 and 59, the auxiliary fund, the revenues are about $12.6 million throughout the year. You would notice if you study it that there are increased revenues over a year ago in several different areas that we've made some, some strong changes in. I will certainly be watching next month's report to see how we've done for the fiscal year 2011. On page 41, the cash balances of various funds show an unencumbered balance of over $73 million. And as you've already heard tonight, we received excellent ratings from Standard and Porres, and I think we attribute that to the leadership of this board and administration, but also as much as anything to Bob Prater, Don Perkins, and Joe Sobchak, in terms of the work that they do each and every day to make sure that everything is working right and helping us to keep everything in the shape that we want it to be in. So, they've done a lot of work this year. The information I've received is that Standard and Porres was even more copious in their study of our finances and reviewing our, our, all of our reports as they have been in the past. So, I think for us to fly through that with great colors is, again, an attribution to all the people at John Scotty Community College. With all that being said, I, I would suggest to you that our finances are in very good standing, and with that, it's my recommendation to college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the treasurer's report for May 2011, subject to audit. I would so move that.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. That moves us to the monthly report to the board. Dr. Callaway.
Thank you, Mr. President. Included under tab six is my monthly report to the board, and I know you've had quite a bit of time to read through that, and so I won't repeat very many things, but I just would like to point out that five of our recent graduates from our graphic design program won Silver Addy Awards at the student category at the American Advertising Federation National Competition. Five students are Brian Setti and Josh Wilkinson, who won for a poster campaign, and then Brian won again, along with Josh Wilkinson, Kate Munchoff, Casey Rudolph, and Rob Mitchell for a mixed media campaign. We congratulate them. Their, their meeting was held in San Diego, and I know they enjoyed that meeting, and we appreciate all their good work. Also, I'd just like to recognize Julie Haas and her team who are working on an online free college day for our students who consider online courses. You know, we've, last couple of years done a free college day, and, and we've had thousands, literally, of community members who come in and take a 45-minute section of class for free, just to kind of get a sense of what our college is about and what happens in some of our various courses. Julie's working now on an online segment of that, and we congratulate her and her team. I know Bruce Hartman's in the audience and will be, have the opportunity to be recognized when we consider the naming opportunity for the Sculpture Garden at the, at the museum. But I don't want to miss this opportunity, since Bruce is here, to recognize him for his really outstanding work. You know, we have some, you know, really wonderful things that happen in our museum, and if you saw the front page of the Sunday art section this, this weekend, we, we saw the recognition of the Villarreal show that Bruce has just been working on for a number of months, literally, and he just, just does a great job for us. Also, we were highlighted in 435 South Magazine, or the museum, Villarreal show was used as a backdrop for some fashion photography, and congratulations to Bruce. You know, every time I turn on my computer, I get an email or see an email from someone who's thanked Bruce for a tour, or, you know, been through the camp, through the museum and, you know, seen all the wonderful artwork on the campus. And so Bruce, you're such a gem and a gift to all of us. We thank you for all the good work you do, and just want to recognize you publicly and thank you for your hard work around this naming opportunity as well, and, and what you do to build our collection and represent our college so very, very well. So, thank you very much.
Okay.
That will conclude my report, Mr. Chairman, unless there was any questions the board members might have.
All right, any questions? I don't believe that we have any other, all business, because we've already discussed the, the housekeeping RFP. So, that moves us to new business, and Dr. Callaway, organizational items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Under tab seven, we have our recommendation for our board meeting dates for this coming academic year 2011-12, and you'll see that in your packet on page 67. As you know, we try and set our meetings as well in advance as we can, and we have those dates designated there on that, on that item in your, in your board packet. It's the recommendation that college administration, the Board of Trustees approve your 2011-12 meeting dates as listed on page 67 of your board packet.
All right. Would somebody like to make that motion, please?
Still moved.
Okay, and second?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And then under tab eight, we have a report from our naming committee. As you know, the, the board has a process and procedure for, for the college to receive on occasion the opportunity to name facilities and places and spots throughout the campus, and we have a committee process that handles all of that, and I would turn the, the report over to Joe Sobchak, and, and I think Jill will be sharing some opportunities there.
Thank you, Dr. Callaway. It's my pleasure to report on the facilities naming committee meeting that occurred on July 7th. During this meeting, the committee considered a naming opportunity that was presented to us from Marty and Tony Oppenheimer, and the Oppenheimers committed $100,000 to, to help fund the Sculpture Garden that is in front of the Nerman Museum. That is that lawn expanse that stretches out toward the intersection. In recognition of their generosity, this space would be named the Oppenheimer Sculpture Park. I'd like to provide a little bit of background for those of you who are, are new on the board, who are, who may have not been around when this all started. The Oppenheimers began donating sculptures to the college in the early 1990s. Over that, over those 20 years, they've acquired numerous works, and I'm going to read a variety of names to you. Magdalena Abukonovit, Stephen Balkanol, Jonathan Borofsky, Louis Bejois, Barry Flanagan, Dehosa, Judith Shea, and my favorite, Puma Baba. It's always good to have Bruce in the audience, because you know you can get a laugh when nobody else does. The amazing thing about these sculptures is that if you can walk down the streets of any major city in the United States and the world, you could very easily run into one of these sculptures created by these individuals. Over this period of time, the Oppenheimers have contributed nearly $2.5 million for art on our campus. Recently, the Oppenheimer collection, and that includes works of art as well besides sculptures, was valued at $6 million. I feel confident in saying that there are very few, if any, community colleges in the country that have an art collection of that stature and art patrons like the Oppenheimers. Marty and Tony are highly recognized throughout this community. They support numerous organizations, including the Nelson Atkins Museum of Art, University of Kansas Medical Center, Children's Mercy Hospital, Canton City Hospice, and the new Kaufman Performing Arts Center. I was not going to recognize Bruce, but since Dr. Callaway has, certainly a lot of the credit for this wonderful opportunity for our campus comes from Bruce Hartman and his hard work that he puts forth here with the Oppenheimers. And lastly, and most importantly, the Oppenheimers made it clear to Bruce, and Bruce informed me about this, that they wanted to thank you all, the trustees of this college, for cooperating and letting them make major investments like this on our campus. This work, this, this could not have gotten accomplished without the support of the trustees, and so special thanks go to all of you as well, and that's. and so special thanks go to all of you as well, and that's from Marty and Tony. Should I go ahead and read the recommendation?
Please.
So the facilities naming committee recommends that the board of trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to name the front lawn of the Nerman Museum of Contemporary Art, the Oppenheimer Sculpture Park.
And I will entertain a motion and a second for that?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Other than, please convey the, the board's thanks to the Oppenheimers who continue to be a terrific friend to the colleges. It's much appreciated.
Mr. Chair, I do have a question.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a timeline of how that will develop and be completed throughout the whole piece of land? That's a big piece of.
The Sculpture Park itself?
Yes.
It is a big expanse, and I'm sure that in Bruce's mind, he has an idea of how he wants to see that thing evolve. So I don't know if you, how specific you can get with that, but if you, now, you want to get the podium? Is that, we tried to avoid having Bruce take the podium, but it seems impossible to do.
Three-minute commercial. Three minutes.
Joe asked me, he said, "Why aren't you doing this?" And I said, "I suspicion that Terry asked him to do it for expediency." We, we've given a lot of thought to this over the many years that the museum was under design and development, and we've identified different locations adjacent to the museum that we thought would be ideal for sculpture works, including consideration of the scale of those pieces. And from the very earliest design meetings, we also involved Q.Sung Woo, the architect for the building, in those meetings. And of course, it was Q.Sung Woo that in one of those meetings suggested, "We're going to have to finish this cantilever of the museum in some fashion. Why not look to an artist?" And that is what eventually led us to Leo Villarreal. And so we're thinking about the scale of pieces, obviously the cost of works, looking at both established artists and emerging artists. And I will share with you that, that there, recently, we did pull a piece into the museum, the Louise Bourgeois, because it has appreciated so enormously in value over the years, and particularly with her death this past year. But of course, this is par for the course with collecting art, and we've been very fortunate to have the Oppenheimer's support. And Tony, in particular, he was here on campus Tuesday, and he asked me to very much convey to you. He said, "You know, the reason we've stayed with the college for almost twenty years is because we have never felt anything other than support from the trustees, from the administration." And he said, "You know, I've been giving away money all my life. I think that's an enviable position to be in." And he said, "Sometimes you get involved with organizations, and it, there become conflicts." And he said, "We've never experienced that at the college." He said, "It's been the best relationship we've ever experienced as donors, and so we're going to be looking at, at a variety of artists, certainly. We might even relocate one of the sculptures on campus potentially over there, but it will evolve." And they're also very much interested in continuing to pursue paintings, photography, other works for the campus as well.
Thank you.
Was that three minutes? Thank you.
I, I would like to say that I don't think that the, the board is responsible as much for the ongoing relationship with the Oppenheimers as much, Bruce, as has been with, with not only you, but also the foundation. So again, thanks to the wonderful work that, that you've continued to do over many, many years.
Thank you.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to the reports from the board liaisons, and I don't think that we have this month a report for the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. Our former trustee Lynn Mitchellson has transitioned off of that liaison, and I am anxious to, to have our new trustees involved with that. And I believe the same thing is true for the John County Research Triangle. So again, we look forward to having reports for that beginning next month. And that moves to the foundation and trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The new office, the foundation has new officers on the executive board. We met last Tuesday. The new officers for this fiscal year will be Steve Wilkinson, who is transitioning on as the president for the next two years. Stuart Stein will be the vice president. Julie Queeren will remain as treasurer. Terry Callaway, Dr. Callaway's secretary. Sandy Price will stay on the executive board as past president, and Susan Shen will be the cultural arts liaison. The, we have three new members at large, Mary Birch, Steve Carmen, and Henry Sandate, and then Tom Van Dyke is also, he's current, was currently on the board anyway, but he's going to be another member at large. The, speaking of the Nerman, Beyond Bounds Brilliant will be on Saturday, October 22nd. They have that every two years, and for those of you who went two years ago, it was really cool. It was a red theme, and everybody wore red dresses and ties, and all of the art was red, so it was very cool. This year, with the brilliant theme, they're going with yellow, so it'll be a very bright and cheery time. You can start your shopping for your yellow dress now.
I've got one.
Good.
I've, I've seen it, too.
I don't want to know, really. Dr. Mary David Cohen is going to be the Davidson Cohen. My, my notes are wrong here. Mary Davidson Cohen and Dr. David and Dana Crete have agreed to be the hosts for this year's event. So far, I just got an update tonight from the notes that were given to me earlier. One hundred and forty-three artists, as of this afternoon, have agreed to participate this year, and each artist will receive a range of mediums, will, not receive a range of mediums, will create their art in a, in a range of mediums, including the color yellow. We expect the results to be brilliant. Those interested in sponsoring the event or serving on the host committee can contact the foundation office. Sponsorship opportunities range from $500 to $5,000. Tickets to attend are $50 on the foundation website, ooh, or by calling 469-3835. The event does include a live and silent auction, gourmet buffet, and entertainment. And I just might say, even if you're not in the market to, to buy something, it's really awesome to walk around and check out all the art. You would be surprised at how affordable a lot of it is. So I don't, don't let the thought of an art sale be intimidating. It's just a really, it's a really neat event. So again, Saturday, October 22nd, and we'll look forward to seeing a lot of you there.
Thank you very much. Pleasure steering. Trustee rail?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Collegial steering did not meet today, so that'll conclude my report.
Thank you. All right, that moves us to the faculty association, and Mr. Anderson, do you have a report for us this evening?
Good evening. I'm happy to see trustee Musial here tonight, and I want to publicly thank you for running for this position here. I know it's a great commitment to the college and a great commitment of time to serve on this board. I want to thank you for that publicly, and I think you'll do a great job here, and happy to have you on board. Having said that, I'd like to thank that the faculty association played a significant role in your election, and, but again, at the same time, we're very happy to have you on board, and we look forward to working with you in, in the coming year. So, thank you. The next thing I have is, is not quite as pleasant. A group of faculty in the past week have, have shared some very serious issues with me here, and the issues were of a nature where I felt no other choice but to file an ethics point report on these issues. And never thought I'd travel this road, but it, it's happened. I filed the report yesterday. When you see the names, you may or may not be surprised when you get to that point there, but I know these ethics point reports are reviewed in a very serious manner, but in this case, I'm asking for a view in a, in a very serious way, in a, in a very exhaustive way, because the nature of the complaint is, is that, that serious. And so I'm just mentioning this tonight to ask for that consideration as we go forward with this, with this investigation here, so, or the review that will come from that. So if you have any questions for me, you want to speak to me privately about this, I'd be happy to answer any phone calls, any conversations, provide information, whatever. So that's all I have for tonight.
All right, any questions? Comments?
All right. Mr. Anderson, I'd, I'd like to give you the, the same speech that I give every time that I give a audit, a committee report, and, and that is that the board takes very seriously each and every ethics point submission. And in this case, it will be no different than, than any of the others. We will consider it very seriously and, and take whatever action the board feels is appropriate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And that brings us to Dr. Kovak and a report on Achieving the Dream.
Well, good evening all, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. It has been a very busy summer for those of us involved with Achieving the Dream. We celebrated our two-year anniversary with the national initiative this past month, and in fact, as a subscribing institution, that reflects the extent of our commitment to the national program. Signed up for two years, and so in a sense, we are graduating from our time with Achieving the Dream as a national initiative. Very happy to report, however, that the core team and folks on campus have decided to continue this work, using the expertise that we've cultivated over the last few years, albeit under a different name, and that name moving forward will be Dream Johnson County. And that similarity in name is not an accident. We intend to use the same kind of framework that we've been using as in Achieving the Dream School. The focus on data and planning as an evaluation tool, a team approach to realizing innovation and pedagogy and support services. So as we retire into alumni status with Achieving the Dream, we are excited about how this work with Dream Johnson County is going to afford us the opportunity to expand our reach, help us scale up successful activities, and continue this journey of transforming the student experience and the developmental sequence here at the college. In fact, the core team of Dream Johnson County is going to be meeting next Monday to deliberate on eleven sketches for new activities that the college might consider for this fall semester and beyond. These range from supplemental instruction, building partnerships with K through twelve partners, and fellowships for intensive training opportunities. And we're planning to consider these eleven sketches in light of a robust set of criteria designed to ensure that our activities are going to be aligned with the strategic priorities of the college and that they facilitate the most compelling improvements to the student experience possible. We do continue to hear success stories from those initiatives that we launched last fall, the beginning of the ten-eleven academic year, including the successful completion of the first-ever Eastern Kansas Math Education Summit, which was here on campus just last week. This was a one-of-a-kind event, brought over a hundred math educators and advocates from our region together for critical and reflective dialogues about how we can work together to increase student success in math in our schools. And lessons learned there are definitely going to inform our future work with K through twelve partners, as well as representatives from business and industry. So we continue to be very excited about this work and how it's really transforming the experience of so many lives here at JCC. We look forward to launching these new activities under this new banner of Dream Johnson County, and during my next visit, certainly look forward to telling you about what new activities we've chosen and some early successes from this fall launch. And of course, we certainly continue to appreciate your great support, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Trustee Sharp.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say, great job. I am looking forward to seeing our long-term results, our long-term retention and graduation numbers out of these students. I can't call them kids, they're students. But I think that we're giving them an opportunity that a lot of people haven't given them, and it's a unique thing that we're doing for these students, and I hope that, that our long-term results show success for, for them. I just want to thank you for your work in that area.
And thank you for, I'd say, the support of the folks around the table, too. We've started to see some great things in terms of how this focus on student success and developmental education is becoming woven into the fabric of the institution. It's going to be part of the K-Bowl Performance Agreement that I've been working on with Dr. Grove, and it's popping up all over campus, so it's really gaining momentum around the college.
Thank you, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Kovak, on the national level, do you have any comment about how many colleges go into the alumni category, and, and how do, how, how will our new program compare with what's going on, on a national level with the top achievers?
The resources we realize through our affiliation with the national initiative are, are access to coaches or consultants, in a sense. We get invitations to the national Achieving the Dream Summit, if you will, and we have access to a few data tools. Those are all things that we're hoping to replicate, in a sense, through this Dream Johnson County initiative. We certainly plan on bringing in outside expertise for that objective perspective where appropriate. Our data tools, on campus, we are blessed with a pretty rich institutional research function on campus, and so hoping be, be able to take advantage of those to help us do the data building and evaluation piece. And as far as the summit goes, as an alumni, we can continue taking advantage of those opportunities, as well as others that may be more specific to some of the new activities we're launching. So what Dream Johnson County looks like at JCC is going to be very similar to what Achieving the Dream might look like at any other college that's participating. As far as how many colleges have gone into alumni status, we are just getting to that place. We're subscribing institutions, and some of the first colleges to sign up are getting to that place. We're certainly seeing some, and as people move out of the cycle, I think that number's going to be growing. But as an alumni, I think everybody retains this commitment to realizing and enhancing student success.
Having had the opportunity to listen to you and work with you a little bit, very little, I've appreciated your passion and commitment to excellence, and I know it'll be the best it can be, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Callaway.
If I might just say to, and I think Jason provided most of the answer to, to your question, but eventually each of the colleges move into alumni status. It just depends on where you came in and what status you came in under. So some of the original Achieving the Dream members actually came in for a five-year cycle. Others came in for two-year cycles, so there's, and then through the initial first five years, some that came in every year. So we're moving, because we were a subscribing institution, we, we were moving in along with several of the, those that started in those first years. So eventually, you'll see all of the, all of the participating schools moving to alumni status. We happen to be moving there because of our, completing our subscription process, so. But the, but the key is how do you move to scale and how do you continue all the work? As, I think as trustee Sharp was asking, you know, the, the big issue for us is how do, how do we do all of this in a very, you know, long-term longitudinal way, and how do we collect the data so we can see what the benefits are and what changes, you know, how are we moving the needle? And so, you know, we're very excited about the work that's happening in the math area and the reading, English writing area. Counseling, we're still doing some tweaking with that and, and some things that we think we, we can still get done, but we're excited about continuing on. The key for us is rather than just taking the funding that we'd put into Achieving the Dream and moving into something else, we're continuing it on, and Dr. Kovak will be leading us through a discussion on Monday where we look at how we might allocate some of those dollars that previously had been used for our subscription and put that into continuing to perpetuate and expand the programs and take them to scale. So we're really excited about that. Means, and Jason reminded me, do we have eleven proposals?
Eleven proposals.
That, that are on the table now that were submitted by our faculty, and so we'll be going through an assessment process with the core team. And Dr. Reinhardt certainly has done a great job of helping lead that, that effort as well, and, and the core team's done some really good things. So we're excited about where it takes us and continuing on with the efforts. We're just investing the money in ourselves rather than in, in the subscription kind of process, but I think it's that, it's been that kind of a game changer for us. And I know the learning quality committee's had an awful lot of presentations and work on that, and we'll continue that this year, but the, the opportunities are really exciting. Great work to the academic team, Dr. Reinhardt, Dr. Kovak, and all the folks involved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We're now at the second petitions and communications section of the board agenda for this evening. The petitions and communication section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people plan to speak. In that instance, the chair may limit a person's comments to less than five minutes. Presenters may choose to speak at either the first or second petitions and communications section, but not both. And prior to beginning comments, we ask that you state your name, address, city, and state, and do we have anyone at this time that would like to address the board? state, and do we have anyone at this time that would like to address the board? Seeing that, we will close the petitions and communications section and move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a fortunate agenda for the board to consider in one motion, a number of motions that are of routine nature, and I would like to remind the, the board that as a result of a motion passed immediately after our executive session, one termination has been removed from the consent agenda. Do we have any other motions at this time that anyone would like to remove or consider separately?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, on page ninety-six of your report, under Consent Agenda, the personnel report, you'll see listed about three-quarters of the way down the page that Jim Schwab was being appointed as our women's, head women's golf coach, and actually, I'd like to correct that, he will be our head women's soccer coach. And the salary and the timeframe is the same, but just changing what the responsibility would be.
All right. Do we have anything else? All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's pass, and I believe that takes us to the end. We moved our executive session to the beginning of the meeting rather than the end, and so unless anybody has any other business to bring before the board, we are adjourned. Thank you.